All right, it's six thirty. We'll call this meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic by which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common sense.
Yeah.
Judge, hold on, Mike.
Good. Roll call.
Mr. Allen.
Here.
Mr. Hazelworth.
Here.
Mr. Raverly.
Present.
Mr. Flinzer.
Here.
Mrs. Maxey.
Here.
Mr. Mahan.
Here. All right, we will move on to the approval of the agenda. Motion to approve or any amendments?
Make motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second. Second half. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to audience to visitors. Casino cards? We will skip over to that. The treasures report?
Uh, yes, you have November and Decembers in your packet. Brenda and Dave are still itemizing Januaries, and we will have that one next for you, but nothing out of the ordinary, and it's as presented.
Any questions on the treasures report? All right, and we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Um, yes. We start first tonight. If I could have the cheerleaders and Kim come forward. I want to thank the parents and the cheerleaders and the coaches all being here tonight. They're all to the side. Congratulations to our cheerleaders. They placed seventh downstate. This is our second year in a row where the cheerleading team has gone downstate. Congratulations, girls. Awesome job. And guys, yes, so sorry. Um, here's what I want to do, is I'm going to introduce each person individually. If you'll just raise your hand, unless you want to step forward and make a speech, I'll let you do it, but otherwise, if you'll just raise your hand. So Kylie Nelson. Kylie. Hannah Underwood. Jenna Shattuck. Emma Blasinski. Miranda Wagner. Jonah Brunchen. And Jonah, you can owe me one. Olivia Topping. Alexis Seeball. Alexis not here. And I want to recognize too, Kim Crawl and Crystal Jolie could not be here. Yeah, Crystal Joel could not be here tonight. She had another commitment, but you guys, congratulations on a great year.
Good job, guys.
Um, Kim, did you want to give a little summary and talk about the year and?
Yeah, yeah.
In cheer?
In cheer, yeah.
Not gonna do it in cheer. Yeah, we had a great season. We started at a competition in Belvedere first week of January where we competed against Bubble Grove. Played school the next day. Then we went to Bubble Grove, we got first. Went to Green Lake, next, we got first there. And we got that conference, 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 conference at the Big Northern, or the Big Northern and the Ten, we kind of like shared our conference meetings. So we got three conferences, then we went to Harley, we got first. Then we went to sectionals. And the way that the IHSA state week works is that there's five sectionals throughout the state, and then the top five teams in each division go to state. So it's like, you know, whatever we do before sectionals is really just like great practice for that day. And it's really, that is like the most stressful day. I think it would all tell you sectionals is like the most stressful.
I was just going to ask that. Was there something more stressful than state? Sectional a little more stressful than state?
Sectional is really stressful, yeah, for sure. Just because, you know, you can have like a really great season up until that point, but if you can't like perform on that day, sometimes you just don't make it to state, which is so disappointing. So we felt really prepared going into sectionals, and we placed second at sectionals. So we were really excited with that. We go into state, and the first day we qualified for finals, which we hadn't done before. So last year was the first year we qualified for state, and then this year it was our goal. When we started this season in April, it was our goal was to make day two at state. So they did, they did such a great job, but I mean, they worked so hard, these kids do, and they, they started practice, the first open gym we had was like April 1st of 2017. So we, we took one week off this year in the summer, that was the IHSA state week, and they've like literally rolled through the rest of the season. So they, they put forth like 110% all season long, they did a great job. We want to thank their parents for putting up with their schedule, and they went to tumbling outside of practice, so it really is such an intense sport, and we're so happy to have you here.
Is there one day more memorable than anything when you look back? State?
Yeah, they love state. It's really fun. You came last year, it's just a really cool environment, and you know, like all the best teams have been all four divisions in there, it's just really fun.
You know, if your competition would have been in the morning, I had everything worked out. I did.
This team had never really competed before the noon hour though, so we were like, we're pretty superstitious. But Chris and I, like, we like to wear different outfits, right? We're superstitious. So when the times we were going to compete, we were like, oh, we're in the noon hour, that's what we've been doing all season.
Perfect.
So we were.
Well, congratulations one more time.
Good job.
Thank you to the coaches, our cheerleaders, our parents. Parents, I know that's a lot of time for you guys too. Thank you guys for all you do as well. So we will continue our meeting. You're more than welcome to stick around if, uh, but if you'd like to exit too. We just appreciate you coming in tonight, really. Thank you, guys, and congratulations.
Good job, you guys are awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I wanted to let the board know we have applied for an after-school grant for grades five through 12. The state is reviewing those grants, and we'll notify districts in May or June of grant recipients. We have put in a proposal that would essentially grow our after-school tutoring offering options at the UE, the middle school and the high school, and this will hopefully, the idea behind it is to focus helping students achieve in the classroom and provide extra instruction beyond the school day. The request we put in totaled about $150,000 per year, and it would be $150,000 per year for the next five. So hopefully we get, hopefully we get that grant. I'm looking into other potential options to help us fill our need for bus drivers, grow our pool for non-certified employees, and even sub-teachers. Lori Miller from Human Resources and Benefit Solutions has reached out to me, and I'm going to talk further with her about meeting and possibly growing and rolling some other options with to help grow some of our staffing that we could use help with. And last Friday, we had an institute day. We had a motivational speaker that talked to our teachers about the value that our kids have, the value that they have with our kids, and we did a lot of collaboration across grades and subject matters. Ultimately, it's not a fun day, but it was one that was very necessary to get us all on the same page and keep moving instruction forwards. A very productive day, and that's all I have.
Is there something going on with the fifth grade classrooms to popper growth to share with us?
In what grade?
Popper growth, the fifth grade classrooms.
Fifth grade? We don't have, we have four.
Our fourth grade, I'm sorry.
Not that I'm aware of.
We have fifth, fourth grade classrooms bouncing around because of mold issues in the classroom down there?
No, we have one, Megan Lang's class down there has a drip and a leak in one of the classrooms. The roofers have been out here the last, gosh, twice last week, three times maybe last week. They found holes in the seams. They thought they found something with a little tear around one of the pipes that comes up through the roof. They sealed that, they put a boot over that. They were back again today, down on their hands and knees, looking around for anything that they can find. We've got a slow drip in there. They found a couple more edges where they think that something could be there. We have wiped the wall down, we're wet dry vac-ing, we've got air purifiers in there, dehumidifiers in there. There's a drip that continues, we're still trying to isolate the source of where that's going to come.
And that's a classroom that had all the tile replaced this last summer because of the same issue, right?
Um, is that right, Heather? Okay.
It's one second, re-classroom, the old section.
So is that on the scope of work to look at and actually get fixed this summer?
That is not in our life safety thing, but we do have the roofers looking at it to repair. It's one of the newer roofs we have, actually, from what I heard.
So it's actually a warranty issue that should have been taken care of this summer?
I don't know that it's a warranty issue, but it's, it's a newer roof that we have.
So is that fourth grade classroom back in its classroom, or are they still getting back strung?
It's a second grade classroom, and as of this afternoon, she was not back in her class because it was dripping still because of the rain. So she was just working out of the library and computer because of the drip today. Mr. Novak assured that they had stopped the leak, they were hoping that they had found the source, and we were waiting until the rain stopped to ensure that we no longer could see the roof.
They patched a bunch more places today in efforts to try to make sure that it's done and sealed up, and as soon as we can get that drip stopped, we'll be in there shampooing carpets, wiping things down, and continue the dehumidifying and the air purifier.
All right, moving on to committee reports. Policy?
Do you need to help me?
We still haven't received our January one. I'm waiting for our January policy to get in, and it's February now, so they should have it shortly here, so. I know they went with a new policy law firm, so maybe they're changing it up, but we do have some that are kind of more business, everyday business, but nothing huge, but we're trying to roll the second group together and just make it one policy meeting.
Let me know when you get that done and all.
Sounds good.
All right. Business services?
Get them out.
Okay. Facilities?
We have a meeting coming up March 7th. We are waiting for a audit report done from a company that comes in and analyzes our roof. The two big roofs we are staring at is Manchester and Capron, and at March 7th, we will talk about that and bring a proposal forward to the board for the summer roof work.
Is that at six o'clock, six thirty?
Four thirty.
All right. And curriculum?
We have not had a meeting, but we have a tentative date of March 14th at 3:45. And Kelly, I just sent you an email asking if you'd kind of send a, save the date out to everybody and we can get an agenda later, but it might be nice to give them since we have a little bit of lead time. Thank you.
All right, moving on to the consent agenda.
Make motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Maxey?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Allenson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelworth?
Yes.
Mr. Raverly?
Yes.
Mr. Flinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxey?
Yes.
Mr. Mahan?
Yes.
Motion carries, moving on to unfinished business. Board and superintendent goals?
Uh, yeah, once again, I placed an updated goal sheet in your packet. At the last meeting, the board asked me to bring back possible dates for a special meeting. I provided those for you. Obviously, you could go to a different date if it's more convenient for that. Personally, next week is tough for me. My daughters have activities every single night next week because of a high school performance. I'd like to steer clear of next week, but if 27th is the only date that you can do, I can make that. But otherwise, I'd put down the 6th and 13th only with the idea that it fits our Tuesday night board meetings if they wanted to be consistent. Otherwise, if somebody else has another recommendation, we can work through that.
Is it something that we need to, superintendent for, or is it something we're going to work on?
What format are you, are you, 99?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about next.
Uh, no, just a, what format would that meeting have? Does it just need to be us? Is it?
That would be just executive session.
Okay.
We'd actually be talking about performance, so.
Are you reconvening the group that worked on goals, or are you guys more trying to organize? Goals and tool and analyzing?
The goals we set two years ago, that was?
No, we set it last year in March.
Was that all the principals, and that was the big group?
Yeah, it was the big group that we used to.
Oh, is that what we want to do?
That could be different. That's what I just was looking for clarification.
I agree.
Because you also have the evaluation tool, which I think is more for the board to decide. Yeah, that's more the board deciding what they'd like to use and what they're comfortable with.
I wouldn't see the need to have everybody there that we had last time. Really long, and I didn't mind what we did, but it was a lot less goal setting and a lot more discussing, inventing.
Right.
If, I, I would say though, if we're going to set goals, some of those emails that I sent to you were requests to give us something, some data to look back at, so that looking forward, we could set more worthwhile, effective, functional goals. So I would, I would think maybe we'd want a little bit of time to decide what are we going to look at. Wouldn't want us to show up again to that meeting and just kind of sit around, have a pizza, and go, all right, what do we want our goals to be? It seems like it needs to be a lot more well researched. I asked Kelly to send, oh, that was this, that was the superintendent evaluation, they're all kind of getting blurred in my mind, but it seems like maybe IASB would have something that we could all look at, how to set the most effective goals, because we're going to want to set not only goals, but measures. And so the next time we go to the evaluation process, we already have good goals, good measures to set.
We talked about it at the board workshop, about having a time where we sat down together and said, what data do we kind of focus on as we felt is important?
So that wouldn't be during executive?
No, it sounds like more open session to me.
Does everybody think of this?
If we're going to actually talk about the goals, and I would want to talk with Mike then, or, I mean, we don't have to, you can, you guys do whatever you want, but I would think we'd all work together on those.
I agree.
So are we just trying to set the date on that for tonight?
Again, looking to the board on what they're kind of looking to do. Are you looking to review the goals that we've had in place, or do you feel like that's self-explanatory, and then looking to set new? Maybe we should have swapped it and did the evaluation as well first.
I, I don't know how everybody else feels, but looking back at last year's goals, I don't think they were very meaningful. I don't think they were very substantive, and they, we definitely didn't put any measures in there. So it would be my desire, we really do some homework and do some research into what are, just what are good goals in general, because it's kind of like writing standards and objectives as a teacher, that you just can't go, oh, we're going to, I think we should do this. They need to be well thought out, measurable. There needs to be some, some way for us to look back and make sure we've met those. So if we, if we figure out how to write goals, then I would think that those goals would need to be based on something. And I don't know what data it will be, whether it be maps or our report card, or what of everything we see that we could look back on and go, we're doing this poorly, we need to do this better, so maybe we'll look forward to looking back at what we did poorly, or what we need to work on. That would be what we input our goals, not just off the top of our heads or off the cuff.
One of the things we do with administrators and teachers is we have a percentage. Seventy percent are based on performance, 30% are based on academic goals, because there's some things where you know that what you're doing is hard to measure through a test, but yet there's other things as administrative roles or what you're doing. And I know through the student valley, I think that they did 640, 60% form, performance, 40% academic. Just as a, something to think about.
60%?
Was based on the administrator's performance, and then they use many of those subcategories or components of the evaluation, such as budgeting, community engagement, and those types of things.
So in your mind, are our goals going to become your goals, which becomes what we evaluate you upon?
My evaluation usually looks upon the board's goals, and I'm usually executing the board's goals.
So 60%, you're saying 60% of our goals would be your performance?
I'm not telling you that that's what you have to do, I'm saying that that's how, well, it's a rubric. And that's how a lot of them are.
If you had a grade, 60% would be based on, oh, he does everything, and 40% of it would be based on student achievement, if that's what you're kind of getting at, I think.
What's the difference? What do you mean? That means your performance.
There's a lot of different categories. Student achievement is one piece. What about budget, fiscal responsibility, what about community engagement? That's what all those subcategories are.
So if you blew all the money, raised the scores, then it would kind of be?
Yeah, we raised goals, we have closest schools, so it has to balance. But academic achievement is a piece of it.
Just looking at our goals, our goals from last year were staffing and curriculum.
Not with direct percentages about student achievement as much as growing or building our curriculum.
Any.
And retaining.
Like, if you don't mind me saying, it looks like the goals we base up are strategic plan. They're directly from the strategic plan.
They're both from the strategic plan.
Right. I don't think that our strategic plan is that specific. The percentages in strategic is general, 100% of the world.
And through our conversations, it almost all aligned exactly to where our strategic plan conversation is meant to.
But our strategic plans are pretty general, yes?
They, yeah.
Very, very big, and I think our goals want, we want them to be much more.
They're more specific.
We want them to be much more specific. And I, looking back at our goals, the things we've said we've met, I kind of feel like our, not, they aren't things we met, they're things we did.
What I'm providing you on the right side.
So what I'm interested in to know, what I think we should be interested to know is if the things we did worked.
And I would go back.
Because we would say we did a lot of things, but we'll want to, we'll want to measure what we did, did it work?
And I think that's where the first discussion goes, because I'm not putting in there whether we met it or not. I'm putting, like you said, what we've done to try to get there.
So it seems to me.
Now you analyze.
Right, that what we should actually be doing is looking back at last year's what you did, wait, no, this year's what we did. Last year's evaluation, what you did, this year we should be looking at, did it work? Because now this year, you've, you've given us a bunch of what you dids.
In effort.
And we won't know if they worked until next year. If that makes sense to everybody that, I've spent a lot of time thinking about this.
I mean, I imagine some of the things, some of the things will be immediate, and some of the things will take time to grow. I mean, like student achievement, that's going to take, you know, multiple years to really see the fruits of the labor there, but some of the staff retention, I mean, that, we've already seen that, so that's pretty immediate.
But again, staff retention, if it's his evaluation, how do we know what he did retained the staff? How will we know if what we're doing is effective?
The other part of that question is, is we were, we went under the assumption that if we retain staff, that we would see academic improvement.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And that's really why that became an issue, the feeling that if you can retain staff, they would be more likely to work as a team, and we would begin to see some movement. What you think you're saying is if we haven't seen that movement, then is that really something that we need to have as a goal? And I agree with you. And I think that's why I asked the question, if we really needed a superintendent to be here, because I think as a board, we need to decide what it is that we want us to get better at. And then if we, once we figure that out, we can figure out what goals we need to get there. But we need to go back to that old, we need to speak as one voice. The other process I thought would work, because I really thought that the people that run and run would take, would take ownership of what we did, I thought there'd be more suggestions about what it is that we needed to improve on to get us to move the compass. Didn't work out that way.
Speaking of that, I don't know how we go about this, or if we can go about it, but in spending the time I have, thought, I thought we would reach out to the principals and to, and to our faculty, to our staff, and say, what do we need to work on? What do we need to work on, and how do we get there? Because what you're kind of doing is ask, what, what goal setting ends up being is asking us, where do we want to be? And I guess before, I know, before my students know where they want to be, they need to know where they're at and understand where they're at. We need to understand where we're at, or else we're just going, oh, we want to increase scores. Of course, we want to increase scores. We want to retain staff, of course, we want to retain staff, but I feel we need to know what we're at, and this comes back to the data. What did we do last year, and did it work? What numbers, what have we seen in a year? And that should really be driving our goal setting. And the strategic plan, I think it's a work that was a worthwhile venture, but we need to ask ourselves, if you're working on communication, that's where we want you to be working on. Parent communication.
So we need to pick a date, or at least?
I mean, I just, I've heard two opinions, whether we're going for just a board meeting that's open session. I mean, that's what we really need to figure out, is what kind of a meeting is this going to be, and when it's going to be? Because part of it, if we're talking about performance, that's executive session, if we're talking about goal setting, that's open session. So I'm not clear to where this is going either.
Can I just ask a clarification? When we met last year in March, and we termed it the creating board and superintendent goals, I'll be honest with you, most of this year has been centered, or a lot of the things that I've done has focused on what we put together that way. You know? If we, just abandoned that, then I do worry about my evaluation at that point.
So maybe we should have a meeting and have it in two portions, one of looking back at what we've accomplished and seeing if there are any measurables, or at least how to input those moving forward, and that would be more of an executive session type thing? And then we could also have a open session goal setting attached to that?
Do that in one day, or do that?
I think we could do it in one night. It might be three hours, but it would be.
Through the 6th?
I am open on the 6th.
Yeah, March 6th?
Yes. You can't? How does the 13th look for you? That's better.
13th? 13th, 13th. 13th of August?
6:30?
6:30 meeting? And just for clarification, just board superintendent. And there may be a closed portion, right?
Well, it's going to be open session and closed session, so.
You don't need to.
Why would you do closed session? Because if we're talking about.
If you're going to talk about my performance goals, that would.
Performance towards, working towards its goals. We can put it on the agenda, that way if we do need it, we can have it, and if we don't need it, we don't have to have it.
If you're speaking to an individual's evaluation.
Goal setting for the next year?
No, that would be open.
That's open.
But if we're looking back, and then if you look back, do a summary.
Can't we just get, can't you just present on what you did and whether it worked a year ago? Because we have the list, I'm assuming, at this year's evaluation. These are going to be the things you said you did. We don't know if they worked until down the road, unless you can let us know that you already know some of them have worked. And so I think we'd be interested in looking at where are we at, which would kind of then be taking a look back a whole year. What did you do two years ago that you got evaluated on last year, and did it work? Are we seeing any results from that? What did you do two years ago that you got evaluated on last year? And did it work? Are we seeing any results from that? We evaluated you last year on what you did.
Mm-hmm.
You created a committee. You hired a curriculum. We did stuff.
Mm-hmm.
But we don't know if it worked. We don't know if the outcome, we don't have any measurables that I know of. Can we get, what have we done that we've seen the results of? Because we've done a lot. There's no doubt we've done a lot. We should be interested in what were the results of those and what worked and what didn't. And that should then drive kind of our goal setting. Something we did didn't work, we need to set a goal on that specifically.
If I can provide a summary, I don't know if it's going to be as quantitative as you want, you know?
What would we base our goals on? In your mind, what would we base our goals for next year upon? Which leads back to all those, is it MAPS? Is it Prairie State? Is it report card?
Is it fiscal responsibility? Is it community involvement? I think those are all pieces. I think they're all pieces.
Those are easy.
I think that's a lot of work, honestly.
As big as any.
There's a lot of people that he's responsible for, so I wouldn't say it's easy. I understand you're looking for the improvement on academic scores. Is that what you're really, you know, driving down to, which I want to see also? But it's, there's a pretty big picture that we're, he has to look at.
Do we need to set a goal of fiscal responsibility?
We have to watch the numbers.
But do we need to set that as a goal?
Previous administration didn't.
I think that's an underlying...
When I walked into Rockton, that was the primary goal. There were deficit spending. And about to do tax anticipation. So that was the number one goal.
What did we do in the last year that was fiscally responsible? And I'm thinking, is that you or is that us? Fiscal responsibility is...
Hope you hope.
I think it's all, I think it's all of us.
We can work towards that next meeting then. We know your dates are March 13th, 6:30. We can clarify the agenda before.
So come with some ideas of specific goals that we might have in mind, or...
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to have to, we'll get on the email before about some ideas of goal setting. Like I said, you know, measurable is important. But there's some big goals that aren't measurable, so we kind of have to get everything in tow. But we'll try to get something out, like I said, that night, if anybody can bring anything they want to their goal and if it's measurable, great, we can go towards that. But...
Here's my ideas with some timelines on there, two or timeframes. I mean, a goal, some goals take time to really...
Right.
And that's, there should be long-term goals and short-term goals. Because not all goals are going to be able to be met in three months or six months or even a year. It may take longer for some big things to happen and to see the results. Given the timeframe between learning and test and sometimes get the results.
Right.
Which is out of anybody's control.
Right, so we'll jump onto superintendent evaluation instrument. Right now, we have two instruments in place. We have the annual review of basically a board survey. And then we also have the rolling project goal tool that Ed brought last year, was it two years ago? It was last year, last year. In the packet, was Stillman Valley's superintendent evaluation tool. So... That's where we stand on that. It's open for discussion.
Phil, it's my understanding we can't evaluate our superintendent on anything that we didn't put in his contract. And what we put in his contract was board superintendent roles, so that's what we have to evaluate him upon.
No, 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 no. If you look at the evaluation tools, the one that they currently have, I would disagree because there are other areas that you can write comments or something when you go.
So we can judge you, we can evaluate you on things that we didn't make clear...
For goals, right.
But we have to evaluate you on these. The ISB's documentation.
The board can do what they want. They really can.
Well, no, actually legally we can't according to that ISB document.
See, the way I look at it is, the board can pick what they're doing and how they're going. When we make those goals, that's helping me focus on like what Mary talked about, short-term goals. Your strategic plan is kind of your long-term process. But some of those things that we put together last March was more some of the short-term ideas for the year, that this is where I'm, the board and the superintendent are all focusing for this upcoming year. That's the way I look at it.
Does everybody agree we should definitely be evaluating our superintendent based on these?
Right, that's, we'll definitely play a lot into it.
Definitely be in the evaluation.
It needs to be in there.
That was, yeah, that was the direction that the board gave him, and is he going that direction?
And then on those tools, usually it goes to, like I talked about the other thing, the other subcategories of all the different things that go with leadership, that you can rate, evaluate, look at, and comment if you feel you need it. Does that make sense?
Meaning the tool we used last year.
Correct. Or even, I think even if you look at the Stillman Valley tools, there's some of the same components. So it's not those goals and...
But wouldn't... Don't you want to know what we're going to evaluate you upon?
Well, exactly, yeah, I do.
But you're kind of...
But I'm also...
To create our own evaluation tool. If we do that, we could throw criteria on there upon...
You could.
Then you have no idea, you could go...
But that's where I go back to. I'm hoping that we're all on the same page, working towards the same goal. And then there's also, the evaluation process is supposed to be one of conversations and moving things in the right direction, not an "I gotcha" type of thing. And so, you know, in some of those other areas and the goals, whatever, this is your chance to give me feedback to say, hey, I think we did well here, but I think we need to improve here. So it's got to be kind of a tool that's used for improvement as well. Does that make sense?
And when it's kind of, when it comes time to vote on his next contract, there needs to be an honest thing of, you know, whether he's worked with the goals. If you have something that impacts your opinion outside of that, it needs to be included because I think the goal of the superintendent evaluation process is to kind of let them know if we think they're doing a good job or if they need to improve so that they're going to get another contract or they're not. You know, mid-contract, it's just an update, but I think he should have a barometer of how it's going. And that's...
Yeah, I would even say mid-contract. It's not an update. It's more of a direction that the board's giving you that thinks like, that this needs to be better, or that this is good, but this could be better. It's things for me to kind of internalize and say, how am I going to do better at this? It's got to be a communication process.
Is there any recommendations or anything on superintendent evaluation tool?
I typed up the former tool that we used last year on Survey Monkey. It seemed like it'd be easy to disseminate and easy to quantify. It would do all the quantification for us. Kelly, if you want to bring that up, I left a spot for every criterion that we evaluate. Where whatever we score, there's the opportunity or a location for us to qualify our answers so that it's a good review. Here's why, bad review, here's why. So, yeah, this is, that's the one that's based on the goals that we wrote together. And it uses the exact same wording. I came up with the quantifiers. And there's a little spot that says, please qualify your answer. So if you say, you know, didn't meet expectations, you can type in why you didn't meet expectations. Survey Monkey will pull it all for you, give you statistical analysis. But I separated our goals from the second link, which is the tool we used last year. But again, I typed it up exactly as it was. That one already, you know what, I might have changed. You might. I don't know how you see the whole thing, Kelly. If you remember the assessment tool we used last year, it just had ones, twos, and threes. And then you had to go back and figure out what a one, a two, or a three was. I wrote, "Performance concerns exist."
Meets expectations, I'm going to assume.
I don't remember what the rest of them were.
You had three or four of them?
I think there were three, maybe even five, so you couldn't... Seems to be, I would have chosen four, so you can't just automatically choose the middle one. Can you make the screen smaller, Kelly? Does that control arrow down minimizes the size of the screen, I think? But if you can't see it, that means... I think the screen must be too big or something. Anyway, I typed those up just so that if we began discussing, we could edit as we were going. Sometimes when we discuss things in, just in theory, my mind can't follow along. So if we wanted to add any statements, if you wanted to change the criterion, I could do it. It's going to have to go to Matt ultimately, or Kelly, I don't know who would...
Oh, probably. I guess if it's all...
Coalesce the information.
Maybe all that. But I mean, if it's just an online version with a little more clarification, I see no problem with it.
Do you have a mouse, Kelly? Can you hit control and roll the, roll the roller backwards? There you go. So I must have put three. "Performance concerns exist, performance meets expectations, or performance exceeds expectations," which actually might be, that is pretty close to what I had. But those are all the same statements that we were assessing last time. If we decide to go with that one. But the tool we use, the goals can be set in open, the tool we use has to be discussed in closed?
No, the tool is open. The results are closed. Everything's open, just the results are closed.
So I don't know if the plan is to edit that now, or again, have another meeting where we come with questions in mind? We're just going to use the same tool over again?
Does the board like the tool, or is the tool not meet what it's trying to do? If the board liked the tool and you wanted to go to the online version, I think that that might be a pretty...
Question. Did you like the tool?
It's pretty similar to what I've always seen. I'm okay with it. I don't know that I love evaluation anymore, but... My guess is the tool is probably structured after something from IASB that hits all the different sites of government. I'm not positive, but that's my guess.
I guess, one of my concerns, one of my issues with it, again, looking at what ISBA suggested we do to evaluate the superintendent, is that if we haven't been clear about the measure, I say, it's my feeling you didn't, and Brian says it's his feeling you did. If the goals and the tool are written well enough, there should be no ability for him to say, "exceeds expectations," and me to say, "didn't exceed expectations," because the measure was so clear. The goal was so specific and so clear, and the measure was very clear. I couldn't possibly say one, and he says five. Because if I remember correctly...
I think some of those things will...
I don't want to give anything away, but it, because we were all over the place last year when we used this tool. There were, and you must have been like, wow, how did one person score me this way and another person scored me that way? And so regardless of the criteria we use, I really think we have to pull it together. And I'm sorry that I'm not an expert at writing these, but I did read that IASB document that said you have to be pretty precise. At this point, it needs to be, unlike the strategic plan that can be very vague, this needs to be pretty exact so that we don't find ourselves in huge variation.
Well, I think for this year, then, we need to use kind of what we had. And next year, we, I say at this meeting, let's make the superintendent evaluation form for next year at this meeting. Because if we make it this year...
Base it right off the goals that we're setting for.
Well, we'll make the tool that night. We'll use, and we'll create questions that night. And then the following year, we'll review them on what we create.
So we'll do this again, but perhaps add some of those to this with enough detail.
Well, and like I said, for next year, I think we can set any goal we want. And hopefully, like I said, make them much more clear, like you're saying.
Make the evaluation directly with the, with the goal-setting process there.
Because if we all sit down and say, here's a goal for next year, can we measure this? I think you're right, that it, what should be a uniform answer.
On the 14th?
13th.
13th. And again, how will we know what we need to work on? How will we know what our goals need to be? Because some of them are just given. Fiscal responsibility, okay. Let's see, fiscally responsible.
Some of them will carry over from year to year, I think. But we'll also have to set some, based off strategic plan, at least, I think we kind of just pick...
Is it high school preparedness? Is it...
How do you measure that?
Somebody's measuring it on their report card.
There's college readiness out there.
College readiness, high school preparedness.
There's a lot of different things.
Is it our in-house, math seems to come up a lot. Is it our in-house math scores?
Then the unit of measurement, are we using ACT, SAT, are we using math?
I think that's what we'll have to...
Providing data on the backside of it.
That would be part of the goal we create.
When will we decide, and will we want Mike to present? Because I may be not making myself clear. If Mike doesn't present something to show how we are, I don't know how we will set goals, or at least effective goals.
We have to tell them what to present though, too. We have to tell them what we want to see and what the data is we want to see.
I kind of disagree. I think you know, or should know, what we need to, what we need to see.
And I'd say I'm working on it.
But, I mean, I get that argument. But, because we've hashed this out before.
Maybe what you're talking about, maybe you're talking about, okay, this is what we've worked on. How does that fit in the big picture and what we should expect from it? Does that help?
You know, you're asking biology teacher. Everything domestic goddess, realtor, mother. You're asking us to ask, what do we want? And I'd say, like, you're the superintendents. What do we need to see? What do you already see? Which in a way would be maybe you kind of setting your own goals. Guys, I see that we're really deficient in middle school math. Like our middle school math needs, so we need to set a goal of that, which we might miss looking at park and maps and report cards.
And you just hit one of our targets that we've been working on. Came up through strategic planning.
Because we hear math often.
Came back. We've talked a lot about math. We've got a lot of math, curricular stuff developing. And the intention is, is we better start seeing gains down the road, resource development, everything else. So that's where I'm talking about the whole big picture of why we're doing what we're doing, where we're going.
I asked you about AP, I don't know if AP data is something you want to... I don't know if AP data is something we want to focus on? We heard that was a bit of an issue last year. Should we see where we're at? Have we already progressed? Maybe you present where already, we've already taken care of that, that doesn't need to be a goal.
Still something that is going right there. Calculating this SAT, Park and field, math.
We've heard mentioned a few times, getting our own in-house assessment of sorts. Maybe one of our goals isn't a subject area, maybe it's a protocol or a procedure. We don't have an in-house data collection, so that eighth grade could present, eighth grade math could present how they're doing in eighth grade math, to compare to the report cards, what it says we're doing in eighth grade math. Which sometimes we hear, well, they don't take it seriously, so we can't really judge them on how they're doing on prairie stage, or whatever the test is, but they aren't taking it seriously. Well, they should be taking their in-house, what's going to determine their math grade pretty seriously. But it sounds like we don't have that sort of in-house assessment.
What we do, we have maps, that charts growth, and then you have Park, that is more about, say, the team.
Growth? Do you want it to be growth? Do you want it to be GPA? Do you want it to be college preparedness?
Ultimately, I'd put that back in the direction, toward your direction. I would probably say growth. If you look at what ESA is gonna go to, ESA's gonna be more switch from NCLB. NCLB was leave no child behind. It was more about attainment, how many of your kids are meeting and exceeding standards. And we knew that each year, it kept growing and growing and growing, until it got to a point where you knew you were really a hundred percent. Well, you knew a hundred percent wasn't really achieving. But you should still expect growth along the way. So ESA is gonna go back to growth, and it's gonna look at many different factors of growth. Obviously, reading, math, ELA is what they talk about, that's huge. They'll be talking about ninety percent of our kids are meeting and exceeding standards by third, fifth, and eighth. They'll talk about college readiness, growth, seeing more and more kids grow. They're gonna talk more about, what are other things doing that, some of the things that they outlined were the five essentials. Do parents communicate back that good things are going on in the school district? Do they feel like they're participating, that they're involved? Do... What is your absentee rate? Is your absentee rate low? Are you making sure that kids are in school? Because those are all other factors that will predict, or hopefully move student achievement forward. So ESA's gonna start talking about more factors to consider in growth, in areas of growth that should have, should help impact achievement.
Would anybody have an issue, yourself included, if we were to ask the principals? Or were to ask, put something together again on Survey Monkey? What are we doing well? What do we need to work on? Maybe something would come out of that, that we haven't even noticed. Because again, parent, biology teacher, mechanic. You know, like, we don't know what, we almost don't know what we don't know, until you present it. Like I said, it's been presented.
And then, that seems similar to what we did last year. Yeah, that seems similar last year, where we go back, we pool people together, and say, what are we, what are we doing? What are we working on?
I think that is, what you just said right there, Joe, is that, at the core essence of what, what are, I think, most concerned to me, is, could we create a Survey Monkey thing, and ask the principals what they think we need to work on? Because we haven't heard those presentations in the three years that we've been here. We don't know what's broken, or what we're doing well. We don't even know what we need to fix. We don't have that line of communication. And I think that you asked that question in an open session, really, just hits on the head where we really are, why we're so concerned with how this process works.
Before that meeting, do you mind if I put something together? And Kelly, send it out to everybody? I guess it can't, I don't know how Survey Monkey works, it can't maybe be anonymous. But if it's coming to somebody who's not a... Does anybody have any thoughts on that?
Who, who would you send it to?
Principals? Ask Mike? Could ask faculty?
I think you go to the union here and have to talk to some people.
And are you looking for district goals again, or are you looking for principal evaluation?
No, I'm not looking for principal evaluation.
But more like, big district goals. Because what I start to wrestle with then, is is what were the discussions we had last year in March? And when we talked last year in March, I thought that they brought some of that stuff forward. Let me go to the curriculum side. We talked about aligning curriculum, putting curriculum guides and maps together across all grades, and making sure that everybody's got a solid curriculum, K through 12, which we're doing. We've done science, we've done math.
Which we did.
Science, we're in the process of math.
We're in the process, but we don't know if it worked. So it's a goal, we set a goal to do something, and we did it, but we don't actually know if it worked.
Okay, so now, this year, we've adopted science resources, right? My hope is, is that down the line here, if we're teaching aligned, we're teaching with better resources, we should start to see science growth. That's a tough one to do. Let me go to math. If you do those same process with math, my hope is, is that's gonna show in maps. At least now, we got a growth test there, we don't have something in science. We have the IESA, is that what it's called, the science? Which they gave us the results from two years ago, which, that's hard to gauge, but it's gonna be growth. So my hope is, is that now, this year, when we go through, we're looking at the identification of resources for my middle grades. And then next year, resources for grades K through five. My hope is, is that with online curriculum and resources, we're gonna start to see students improve. But it's not fast. It's not overnight, I realize.
I think we've talked about the process of identifying standards, identifying power standards, and then they're creating those common form of assessments that you were talking about, local assessments. And that is a five-year process, from identifying standards, to breaking them down, to aligning your curriculum, to developing those PLCs, where you're looking at creating those local assessments. It's a process.
Come back, review what you've given, talk about what went well, talk about what didn't go well, and then adjusting teaching and strategies to make sure that students are learning, or you're correcting what, what can be better. That's the whole process, and we're in the beginning phase of that process.
So we can set some goals, but we won't be able to actually know if they were worthwhile for three or four years.
I'm trying to wrestle with...
That's a, that's an exercise in utility.
I mean, you can set some goals, and those can be, like, we, as principals, we have to set goals that we are assessed on that year. And that's only a small portion of our assessment. The rest of it is that big picture, the community piece, the communication, all of those pieces. But big goals, like assessments, and seeing how they impact student achievement long-term, are longer goals that will take a while to see.
It's a systematic thing. I know where you're coming from, and I understand the frustration, and I'm not saying that there shouldn't be improvement. I'm hoping to see some already, just by us having discussions, and us aligning the curriculum.
Is there a chance we'll directly relate it to anything?
My hope is through curriculum alignment, especially through math. Because we've already talked, last Friday, we were talking about just the different timings of what comes up on Park, what isn't there, and when we teach things, and what some of those segments of the test are that have not been covered yet. Well, that's gonna have an impact on student achievement. So my hope is, is that through some of those discussions, some of those alignments and timings and everything else, we start to prioritize what we need to talk before those tests happen. And that should impact growth, which should be following in the lines.
Tom, did you have a concern about? Do you want the meeting to be with principals and any staff who's interested in attending? So that we can find out what's not working, why isn't it working, and what could we do? So that maybe we would see some trends? Because again, we're setting the goals, but they're the ones in the trenches.
There's a part of me in this whole discussion that I want to take a backseat to it, because a lot of what you're building on is what you folks all went through in March of last year. And I get the part to where, you know, if you give a set of marching orders out to somebody, and he starts working towards that, to try to go back now, after the fact, and say, well, I know this is what we said, but it's not really, we didn't really put it in a measurable way, and so how do we... Well, you can't. You can't do that. So to some degree, I want to sit back here and see what you guys said last year, see how the plan was, and see what things that we had in it, that either, you know, now a year later, I'm looking at this and we can't measure it, or I looked at it, and I was under the assumption that, or in Joe's case, I was under the assumption we would get measurable results in a year, certainly two. And now I'm kind of hearing, well, maybe it's five years, and so let's reset our expectations on it. But what I would like to see in that one tool that you had there, is I think you have the generalized pieces, that you know what we want to go to, and whether that's, you know, five years out. And then, as Mike starts backing these back into what, you know, let's say, English was something I was gonna start in year two, and math was year one, I start seeing how he lays these in. And my biggest thing that I want to see is, if Mike sells us a plan that thinks he's gonna get us two percent growth each year, it isn't to beat him up if he comes back minus two and one, or something like that. But we had something, we had a plan, we had a measure we thought we were gonna hit, and for whatever reason, we didn't hit it, what's the adjustment? Why do you think we didn't hit it? What's the adjustment you need? And let's redo our plan to hit that. You know, Ed mentioned, and I'm trying to think what that was, a couple board meetings ago, where a couple teachers came in, well, it was a more general discussion about the high school, and how did you pick this piece out? I think if we had a defined plan that we understood like that, we could see how that would lay in there. And so I'm, I'm sitting here deferring a lot to you guys, but in a way, I don't see how you set this without Mike being there, to tell you, these are your generalized goals, you know, Mr. IT guy, Mr. Kelly. This is how we, you know, this is what my goals are, and this is how I plan to put them in, and this is how you can measure me. I love that one plan in there, to where you look at percentages, you look at map scores, you look at this, and this is the numbers I want to hit. As a board member, I get frustrated with the flavor of the month from the federal government, that no child left behind, race to the top, and now it's us. It's, by the time you get to where you think you're gonna measure somebody on something, they pull the rug out and come up with something else.
Park is gonna change again. We're hearing that.
So I would like us to say, well, we've learned that we can't base it on that. Here's something that we can do that's independent, or at least it somewhat ties into it. But that's kind of where I'm at, Joe. I get a lot of what you're saying. I don't, I worried, worry, or get concerned about unfiltered input. That is, that if we throw a Survey Monkey out there, that it's, it's somehow become something to where the superintendent feels like he's getting measured by it. And I, and it... But, but I don't know what you guys, I really don't know everything that you did a year ago, and what type of input that you had, and things. So I, what I see is, is maybe the most frustration is that you got these good goals, but maybe a little light on how, what the measuring part was gonna be. You gave a good set of marching orders that we want this, this, and this done, but not really, come a year from now, how are we gonna measure that they were done? And more importantly, that they're, besides just checking a box off, that they're actually doing what we wanted them to do. And that's fine. I mean, it's, so now we know what we want to work on this year. So...
And I look at what we put in the goals, probably like you said, they're foundational pieces. They really are. But those things should be the foundational pieces, but start to move those goals and those measures. They have to be there first. And I'd hate to switch with a drastic change somewhere.
Where are we coming up? I'm sorry, but where are we coming up with a drastic change?
No, I, just let me finish, please. Okay. Not a drastic change, but if we pick another set of priorities to go somewhere else, then I feel like, you know, we don't see anything through. And for impactful, significant change, we need to see entire processes through. That's all I was gonna say.
So you want us to build on these?
I think these are some foundational things, and it would be very easy to build off of them.
Okay. But can we add to them? Because I don't think we'd get rid of...
I wouldn't get rid of staff retention.
Staffing our curriculum. So I don't see us...
So like, now, next year, you probably could start to throw some academic goals towards math. Now that you've done this, let's hopefully start to see some stuff there. My only part of science is, is how do we come a bit of measure, and that might be something that we discuss, just because of not a great growth tool in place. And maybe we look at something with a common formative assessment or something.
Well, you know, that's telling that you say that. If we don't, if you don't know how to measure it, then we shouldn't even talk about science. Because what would be the point of making a goal if we can't measure it?
I still think it's important that we have the foundational pieces of reviewing the science curriculum, and making sure that we're analyzing how we're doing. And that's gonna have to be common formative assessments, more than it is a standard.
In-house.
In-house, correct. Sorry.
I am gonna beat to death this in-house assessment, because we have mentioned that for months now. And if we don't get that, we're going to spend, I don't know how many more years, talking about how we can't trust Park, and we can't trust maps, and we can't trust this. If we can't trust anything, then everything we do is pointless, quite frankly. Our goal-setting is pointless if there's no measure for us. We have to have some measure. And I don't know if it's in-house, I don't know. Kind of feel like you should know, or somebody should know, that you know would know, and whatever that is, whatever he comes to us with, let us know that that's the thing we'll use as our measure. Because if not, we're just sort of, we're deciding to do things every year, but we won't ever really know if they're effective, and that just shouldn't be.
You can strive for things, but you can't. You're not gonna achieve. We don't purely base teachers' reviews on student achievement. You want them to do the right things.
For sure we do. Forty percent?
Twenty.
Twenty percent.
Twenty-five percent.
Thirty next year.
Okay.
So a portion.
What can be our twenty percent? Give me a twenty percent at least. Like, what is our twenty percent? Because our things we've done are things we did, and I'm not sure we will ever know, even on this document, that they were actually functional and led to anything. We did things...
The teacher retention, that was one we did, and there is a number that goes with it. That's why we picked it.
Do we know that it's us, though? Because did we already boom within just one cycle, increase that retention? And was it anything we did, or was it just hiring him? Because if it was just hiring him, we're done. We don't need to, we don't need to address that anymore.
We still get credit for hiring them. Pardon? We still get credit for it.
We do get credit for it. I'll take the credit for it, sure.
I think, like, with the science and the math, I think, like I mentioned, you know, it starts with that, aligning the curriculum, and then it starts, next piece is, you know, identifying those priority standards. And the next piece added on is the development of the in-house, the common formative assessments. And then from there, you begin to look at that data. But you can't do the data piece if you don't have the groundwork down first.
Okay.
Which is identifying the standards, which next one just came out recently, so now we have a new curriculum. And then now it's identifying those standards, which the committee did this year.
Maybe we get to college readiness, Joe. That's one of your standards, because that'll fall right into college readiness.
I don't know. It sounds good, but, and if that's what...
And I just sat at an EASA conference that talked about this exact process, all three of my peers that were there. So I know the process is right. I'd agree that you've probably got, we've probably gotta be stronger with where we've put academic, or more focused on what we're looking at for academic work.
And I guess in general, I'm gonna be pushing for a high bar, because it's us, as the board, that sets that bar. And if we waffle, because we don't know whether Park or... And if we waffle, because we don't know whether Parker Maps, and we're still building a foundation and a groundwork and still developing curriculum, then I'll just set it in my mind that this four years I'm spending on here is foundational. But I can't believe that there wasn't already some sort of foundation set 10, 20, 30, 40 years ago upon which we're building. Because it feels like we're doing a lot of foundational work and setting curriculum. And we don't know which measure to use. And I felt like this would be much more exact, that this would be much more exact. Which is why I feel like maybe we can't trust any of the out-of-house assessments. Maybe we need some sort of in-house assessment, which I would think could be thrown together in a semester.
That can be part of our goals for him, too, to come up with a plan to do an in-house assessment and to have a baseline created.
And I bet you with conversation with the teachers, they probably got some pretty good ideas already.
Right. I think now that the standards have been identified, it makes it easier to identify these are the 12 things we want to do in this second grade.
So will you be presenting to us what we're, where we need to focus as a board?
I can, if that's what you want me to do. And I feel like that's what I've been trying to do all year. And maybe I'm doing a terrible job.
Okay, well, I guess I would tell you, you haven't made that clear to me. Maybe you've made it clear to everybody else, and I should just sit back and let them take the lead. We've talked about Maps and ECR and Park and report cards, and we talked about why we can't trust this, and we can't trust this, and we mentioned we should have an in-house baseline. And we keep going to these meetings, and they keep talking data, 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 everything we should be doing should be data-driven, and I-
And every one of those meetings will use all those points of data as a piece, not a standard.
And you keep asking, at least me, what I want to see, and I keep thinking, I don't know what I want.
Given you partner's ultimate map growth we give, you know.
I don't know exactly what I want to see.
School reports.
I want to ask, I want to ask principals, I want to ask staff, I want to ask janitors, I want to ask parents. Because I know as a parent, I also, in that role, I feel like we've got this work to do, and we've got this work to do. But it should be, that's just a feeling, and that's just with my kids, so I think it should be based on-
Well, and that's why we had the strategic plan with the janitors and the parents and everyone, is to get that opinion.
Strategic plan. I would be amazed if you didn't analyze every strategic plan done every year for the last 40 years. They don't say something about parent communication, improved curriculum, staff retention, better lunches, and I don't know.
They're broad.
It was, they were broad, it was collaborative, but I don't think that's on the level of what we should be doing. We're setting the bar, or not. We're pushing the envelope, or not. And if we're pushing an envelope, it should be based on something. And I know I, for one, feel like I don't know what I should be using, ECR or Park or the report card as that baseline off which we jump.
I think we have enough to deliver our meeting. Like I said, I don't want to discredit all strategic plans ever.
Well, not discredit it, but I don't think they're our goals.
I think they're our goals, but broad goals.
Very broad.
Yeah.
And we drill in on those all the way, and that's what happens.
Tom, if you want to know what happened last year, it began with Ed, who was it, that spoke about how great our parents were?
It was administrators.
Yeah. And administrator said how great our parents were, and within about two hours, it came back to how terrible and uninvolved our parents are. We've got great parents, we've got great, it started there, that was the first thing that was said. I think we were talking about what's great about North Boone. We've got great parents, great family, and in the end, it came all the way back around to, you can't get parents to do anything.
And I'm afraid, I don't want to, I don't want to paint it as the administrator said our parents were terrible. I don't want to say that.
Oh, no, our parents began with, our administrator began with, we have great parents. But in the end, it all came around to we-
An increase in parent involvement. I don't want to say they were terrible. I think that's a different thing. And that's a bad message.
But it's one of our strengths, it's one of our weaknesses. It started with it as a strength and went to a weakness. And so in the end, we kind of got mixed messages out of that.
Do we have enough run on 13th, then?
I guess, again, I don't, I can report on what we've done to this point and have a broad view of what we're trying to do and move forward. I don't know.
You come with some deficiencies that you'd like to see improved, and that way we can set our goals on issues that you see as, in our district.
Okay.
All right. Okay, then we'll move on to new business. February 2018 bills. Mr. Kinzer.
Yeah, I looked them over, and everything looked, looked in order, looked good. So I would make a motion that we approve the February 2018 bills as presented.
Second.
Motion's second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Havering?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allenson?
Yes.
Move on to item B, approval of 2018 registration fees.
Yes. The fees are as, same as last year with the exception of the AP test, which went up $2. So we'll go from 92 to 94 for next year. And that's my recommendation. All the other fees are held flat.
Move to accept it as presented.
Motion. Senator Maxie, any discussion?
I, this is my first time around this time, looking at the fees and things, and I, I think we talk, the current percentage, and I, is somewhere around 40%.
Forty to forty-five percent.
Forty, forty-five percent of the families actually pay the fees.
Oh, I thought you meant free and reduced.
Oh, I'm sorry. So then the other way around, then, it would be, I thought it was, you know what percentage?
Forty to forty-five percent are like, we're right in there, that range, with free and reduced lunch.
So then, the other side, 60%. Okay. And do you know what dollar amount is it?
I couldn't speak to it right now.
Okay, and that's not fair for me to ask now. I-
In my last three years, we have held it flat every year.
For clarification, if you're on free and reduced, your fees are waived, right?
Correct.
Right. So we've got 62% are free and reduced, right? Is that what Julia presented?
I think we're, let's see, probably closer to, right around 40% are free and reduced, so 60% are not free and reduced.
There's also a difference between reduced lunches and free lunches, and then the fees waived. So if you have free lunches, then that, there's a difference between, so when you-
And a direct source.
When it's just reduced, you don't get the fees waived, right?
Correct.
Okay. But Tom, your concern is of those that aren't reduced or waived, what we, what we actually collect of those who are actually charged? You're interested in the, what percentage of those who actually have to pay the fees do we collect from? Is that your concern?
And then they, it kind of, yeah, as you go down that slope, you kind of get to that part to where, then, you know, we talk about collections or doing things like that at the end, and I-
Our two big events, obviously, that make people settle up, our graduations, everyone high school. Last year, when we worked with the board and the business committee, the recommendation was, is if you moved out, then we would have the ability to send them to collections. Moved out of the board. We do have a lot of people that take care of their bills at graduation time, and settle up. Percentage, I couldn't give you that, Tom.
I, just sitting through our registration process, and, you know, when you have a couple kids to put through there, and you see where fees have gotten so high that we offer payment plans and things on them, it just, I wish we didn't have them, wish we didn't, and I guess as the ones that stick out to me, it's these and the ones that we charge on our facilities. I just, with us getting to the percentage of people that actually pay them, yeah, I, it's one of my heartache votes, just I-
From my view, I really thought that the business, I mean, Business Services Committee was going to get an opportunity to talk about this. Julia had presented some options to limit what families would have to pay for fees and some other things to provide some relief to the taxpayers for some of this stuff. And the fact that it just showed up here, I think is disappointing, to say the least. Particularly when a couple of us have made our feelings known.
When does this, when does this have to be approved by?
We typically bring it this time of year, but if you'd like to take it back to Business Committee and discuss and analyze and do that.
Sounds like a good plan. You good with that, Ed?
That's up.
Put the table, there's still, it goes to Business Services?
There's some directive about seeing what we can do to put some limits on what the impact that these fees have on families.
You need to vote down that. Motion in second, Tom?
Yes, so we need to vote, we need to vote on that motion.
So we have a motion in second, so we'll have to vote on that, if we vote it down, then we can table it till the next meeting. So, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor of leaving them as presented?
Oh.
Or, yeah, so.
Never mind. Thank you for clarifying.
Actually, that's a roll call, too.
Mr. Havering?
No.
Mr. Kinzer?
No.
Mrs. Maxi?
No.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Mr. Allenson?
No.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
No.
Would someone like to table that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Business Services meeting.
And Ed, clarify again, direction on the impact of the fees that-
I'd like to see it expand on what Julia talked about, about limiting the total fees that a family could be charged.
Got you.
And before we make that motion, do we want to throw the lunches in with that, or not? Is that the next bullet point?
The lunches aren't impacted by the fees. The lunches are what they are.
Yeah, and we had to raise those because of the state requirement to be within a range for free and reduced reimbursement costs, so they're separate.
Okay, then we have a motion in a second. Table, roll call.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allenson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Havering?
Yes.
All right, then we'll move on to items. C, approval of the 2018-19 lunch and all car prices.
Make a motion to approve the lunch and all car prices as presented.
Motion.
No, second.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allenson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Havering?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
All right, so then we will go into executive session for the appointment, appointment
compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. A legal counsel for the public body include either carrying a testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or a legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. Roll call.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Allenson?
Yes.
Mr. Hazelhurst?
Yes.
Mr. Havering?
Yes.
Mr. Kinzer?
Yes.
Mrs. Maxi?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
No.
Motion carries. Is there any further business to come before the board? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion again.
Maxie?
Second.
Hazelhurst, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. All right. Good job.